Okay, now we're good.
Okay. Item one, your consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Robert, to hear up.
Evening, Mayor, Council. That's here's the status report for March tenth of this year. I have only a couple items on page five. Waste water IPDS permit.
Thank you.
Sorry, page four. Item number twenty, per moment. Number twenty, Gary Carroll for his email dated April, sorry, February fourteenth. The INI report was approved. Ray was ready for approval and the waste water facility plan is awaiting environmental determination. Once that happens, then we'll get a, you know, it's a final approval for all documents at the same time. So we assume that's close. That was dated almost a month ago, so that should be coming shortly. And item twenty-one, he was working on addressing the IPDS permit renewal application ahead of that April third deadline. He's trying to get that wrapped up within two weeks, one or two weeks ahead of the deadline that way the CTC's what they think it's hard. And then he clicks, the city clicks submit and should be all good.
I can't remember, how long does it take for us to hear back from them?
I don't know, we were on administrative.
I mean, it was a special deal, yeah?
For, uh, I don't know, over ten years on the last permit.
I was gonna say, the last one was over ten years.
About ten years, okay.
Yes. So, you know, it could be between, you know, a year or fifteen.
So I'm just glad we're getting everything in on time.
That's the important thing.
Okay. You, Robert, if you may have any questions for Robert? Okay. Okay. Is this Mr. Young?
Yes.
You're next on the agenda. You got here just in time.
Well, thank you, council members, Mayor. Um, I'm with, my name's Tony Young. Resigned down from New Plymouth, Idaho. You need my address, Governor? Right there, okay. So my business is T. Young Inspections LLC. And currently, I think Steve Pearson with Idaho Building Inspection has a contract. And he's looking to start facing out. And I think that he may have talked to you, Professor Mayor, but anyway, I think on his contract, he's got a, you know, like a thirty-day termination notice. And so I've been trying to get all the, take over the contracts. And I've been working with Steve for the last over a year and a half roughly. A little background on myself, I grew up in New Plymouth. My mom and dad used to have that, the Four Corners store, Hamilton Corners, Highway thirty and seventy-two, fifty-two, right there. Anyway, ended up working construction, long story short. Got into building inspection up in the city of Haley. I came down to the Jim County, learning to run the planning and zoning and building department there. And from there, I was asked to apply for a job for the city of Boise. So the last twenty-something years, twenty-three years roughly, I've been with the city of Boise. Except for the last year and a half when I started contracting with Steve to do his building inspections. But Steve still, Steve still wants to stay on and be contracted with me to stay involved and do some of the plan reviews. And then that way, he gets, you know, some money out of his business to.
Okay.
Doing that. So, and I think I emailed up the, to Sandra, the contract there, yeah? And that's a draft, I mean, it's something that, that I've been using for other jurisdictions.
Okay. So basically, you and Steve are just changing roles then?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. And then currently, I have a new website that's just when I have to, for inspection requests and but I take care of, I'll start at the South End, I take care of Marcin, Ondale, Wilder, Greenleaf, Parma, City of Pea, Washington County for the time being. And I also do Pea County. I just received that contract here recently. And then I also take care of the city of Horseshoe Bend and Crouch, Idaho, in the Grand Valley. And I have my son that works with me and and then Steve is gonna still help out too whenever we can do it, so.
That's quite a bit more ground than Steve used to cover, isn't it?
Oh, that's pretty close.
Is it?
Yeah, he doesn't do Pea County or Horseshoe Bend or Crouch. So that is, you know, that's more than what he used to do. Back in his day, he actually took care of the city of Verde.
Okay. And Washington County now has, they've hired their own building?
They are, not a friend of him.
Okay.
Or a cousin to work with him and showing him. And, uh, yeah, he's, he's doing pretty good.
So Mayor, you might notice that I got a letter of resignation. Steve, today, that's on your desk, it wasn't in your packet.
Okay.
Be able to do the transition. And that's the same thing that went to Washington County this morning at their meeting.
Yeah, I think that a finisher signed that this morning. And I'm not sure, I did some inspections up here, I don't know if they work for Washington County or the, or the city of Cambridge.
Probably for the county, because nobody should be building anything in the city as far as I know.
Central out on that, that ridge.
Oh, Holabos, probably, yeah. That's outside the city limits.
It's in the impact area.
Yeah, I think a bunch of people are here probably to look at the growth and the, what's coming. But I think it's good to get geared up ahead of time.
Okay. Well, thank you, it's good to meet you.
Yeah, mine, huh?
Yeah, does any of the council have any questions on our contract?
Straight forward. I believe it's pretty much like Steve's contract and the same rate schedule as well.
You bet. And just so, I think I can leave it up here with you, I've got, I'll be my work once gone. Land, liability, liability and W two or whatever it is.
Okay, yeah, if you want to leave that with me. And I also need your phone number, alls I have is your email.
Oh, and I brought some cards.
Make a motion to approve the contract for building efficient services for T. Young inspections?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I do.
You're hired. Excuse me, you see, we see the initials LLC thrown around, what does LLC stand for?
Limited Liability Corporation.
Which means what?
Uh, it means that I have a, you know, insurance so that right now I'm taking care of my lawn. So if something happens, they can't sue me and take my property where I live, basically is what it amounts to.
Okay.
That's how it's explaining to me.
Okay, item four, meat and potatoes. Okay, Sandra, do you wanna lead out on this? I'll just type up once in a while.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna be looking at the comprehensive plan proposed updates for chapter three, four, and five. The ones we've been working on, so if we wanna start with chapter three, housing. Um, we've made a few edits to it, tried to update, uh, some of the statistics and things like that. So three point two one on occupancy, you can see that the new numbers for that. And then three two two is the same, taking out all of that stuff and putting in new numbers. Now, some of the new numbers, and you'll see the basic ones on exhibit seven and stuff, with the new ones. I don't agree with the numbers, but that is what the American Community Survey has. You know, it says that we have forty-three vacant housing units in the city. I don't know where they are.
Like Go Falls, or what are they?
They're probably like the basement underneath Creed Notes.
Any, anyway, but that's what, you know, the American Community Survey has, and so that's what we put in there. That's kind of what we've been using for statistics in the comp plan. But you will notice that, like in the city of Cambridge, as far as the last time we had a new, not just a remodel or an addition or something like that, uh, we had ten from two thousand to two thousand nine, but since two thousand ten, we haven't had any actual buildings in the city limits.
Yeah, well, I don't know where that number's at, we have at least one new house since I've been here.
Yeah, like I said, I don't, you know, that's what it shows, so. The same with the housing costs on the next section, three point two three. And, uh, basically all of that's crossed out and a new exhibit eight's in there. And, um, you know, it has some interesting statistics, but I don't know how accurate they are. One thing that I thought was a little bit different was, it says our median gross rent in Cambridge is a thousand ten dollars. And the, uh, for Washington County's only nine nineteen, that we have a higher rental rate, you know, gross rent rate. I thought that was surprising, you know, a little bit.
Geez, from the ground up, it really makes you question their information.
So I just kinda wanted you to notice some of those things to know that, I mean, this is what we're putting in the document. But how accurate is, I don't know, and how well you can base your opinions off of these figures, you know, I don't know. I think we have a better idea of what's going on in the city maybe than what these numbers show us.
So we can't just put our own numbers in, we've gotta go by their numbers, or what's the deal?
I'm probably not considered a legit source.
No, okay, so they're legit, okay, even though they're wrong, they're legit, okay.
So if you keep going in that document, I don't believe there are any other changes to it. So we just changed the statistics as far as the housing, but we kept all of the same goals and definitions and things like that. I don't know if anyone had anything else on that or not. It seemed. Because if we do a public hearing on these comp plans, if there's any material change to them, uh, we have to have another public hearing. So if we wanna make any changes, we really need to do it now before we schedule a public hearing. I'm sorry, I didn't turn my ringer on back there.
What can you take to put those wrong figures in there?
That's a question.
I just got a question, so like on this, you're in the three section, right? So like in the three, five, two section, at the very bottom, it says communities may also create provisions for building two single-family dwellings on a single lot. I mean, for that, is that allowable in Cambridge right now, or is it only if it's not built, or what's the word you're using?
Oh, an ADU?
So is this gonna change to where you can build two different houses on a single lot, or?
You must have the old copy.
Yeah, I was gonna say it.
Cause we took that out.
Yeah.
So it's not possible to do that anymore then?
Uh-uh. Cause that's how our code is written right now, is no more, you can't have more than one single-family dwelling on a lot. So.
We, we, we probably can take care of some of that problem if we do an overlay, as far as in the overlay district.
So is the overlay that adds where you can build two houses without, it could be an ADU, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, would.
Actually, more than that.
Change the minimum lot size and to get more density.
Does anybody have anything they'd wanna inject in any of these categories that you feel need to change?
And you're just talking about section three still?
Yeah, let's go through that next.
So are we ready for four, or are we still on three?
Ready. Okay, let's move on to section four.
Okay, chapter four is on economic development. The first page is the same, um, the second page, four point two, on existing businesses. You'll see a lot of strikeouts and additions there. Uh, we put in, took out the businesses that no longer exist and, um, put in some new ones that are there. And, um, employment status by occupation on exhibit ten. Did the same thing and put a new exhibit in there. Kinda gives you some good information and, you know, compares it to Washington County. And this is up from the American Community Survey two, so, you know, I don't know how close it really is, but it gives you an idea. And then exhibit eleven is the same thing on, um, employment by industry. I thought it was very interesting, they say there is no one in the city limits that is employed in construction. But I know a few.
So must just have to do with, filled out their survey or whatever.
That's what I was thinking, is.
And if they just throw the trash, that information's not in here.
Yeah.
So we could go around and point out who threw it in the trash? Okay, thanks, Tony.
And then exhibit twelve's on household income distribution, so we have a new chart in there. You could see that we're lagging a little bit behind the county's average, or mean household income and medium household income. And then exhibit thirteen's on number of households receiving earnings by source, that has some new figures in there. Then on community events on four point four, we did a little tweaking there, we don't have a farmer's market anymore, music in the park took those out. And the traditional harvest festival doesn't happen anymore, but we did put in the arena one that they do. They donate every year. And I believe that's all the changes in economic development. Kinda felt the goals were still, the goals we were working on.
Is Harrison trucking in here?
Doesn't bug like it.
Did she throw the paperwork in the trash?
I'm bankrupt, I guess.
We can add that.
We need to add that. Get him some new paperwork. Okay, any questions or comments or anything for section four? Or chapter four, I should say? Okay.
Okay, so the next one is, um, the land use one, and it has more of the changes that we were looking at. So in the first part, that's highlighted yellow, I just did that so we don't forget. We have to change the comprehensive plan by resolution, and so when we get a new resolution number, we'll put that in there, so that's current. So in five point two, under current land use patterns, uh, we're proposing to take out commercial industrial. The mayor and the staff kinda talked about that, that we didn't really feel we had a place for a combination like that to go. We'll talk a little bit more on that on the future land use map. And so we did add medium-high-density residential, which is a, we gave it this definition, detached, single-family homes are predominant, but a variety of housing types, including duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, apartments, and condominiums could be allowed. Residential densities typically are between six to ten units per acre on lots ranging from four thousand three hundred and fifty-six square feet or greater. Neighborhood activity centers with retail restaurants, employment, and other services are encouraged within walking distance, and pedestrian-oriented streetscapes are desired. So that was our one that might answer Darren's question. Before, our densities weren't over six, but if we do an overlay zone, we needed a definition for something a little bit more dense, so it goes up to ten units. And it's changing their, uh, the size of our lots for that area. And I believe those were the only change, oh, under areas of impact, I did put in the new state statute requirements because it only listed the three from an old statute. And then we go to a future land use map, that's our exhibit. And so that is our crayon drawing that Cory and I mastered.
Took a lot of work coloring that, I tell you what.
So, um, it's a little bit different. Crayon drawing. Do you have any extra crayon down?
No, you can use mine, Noah's.
I'm just gonna try to give one of the back row. So, in your packet, I had all kinds of maps for you, so this one right here, and do you guys have this one? Some extras in that one. That's in the impact area. And the county did this, but it's not officially legal because we haven't gone through property descriptions and stuff because I'm gonna be proposing that the county does that and makes a map for us since we've been working on the impact area resolution and you know, all those details. Cause it's really, the county is supposed to be coming to us to negotiate the impact area. So that's the new impact area, taking out some of the farm land that we had when we had all four sections included. We took in a lot of, took out a lot of prime ag in there. And so if you take this and then go to the crayon drawing, it's the same thing. Except we're proposing changing and getting a little bit more commercial down our corridor on Highway ninety-five. Uh, there's a few property changes in there on the future land use map. And, um, there's a couple right here, I don't believe are commercial right now. And then this green area, instead of being A one, and we talked a little bit with our attorney this morning about it too, um, we'd like to propose that going to A two to be transitional. We didn't feel that anywhere in the impact area should be, uh, you know, prime ag. That it should be transitional in the impact area. And so there's only two main places. Basically, this is Tibbong Runners Fields here. And this is Noah's over here, this piece of Noah's. Noah's already have a CAFO. We're proposing in our code that no CAFOs are allowed in the impact area. But Noah's would be grandfathered in, yeah. So the yellow here is residential, this is really yellow too, but it was on the map that we took off the county and stuff. It was gray in those areas, so it doesn't look yellow. And so the only industrial is this little piece that we currently have, where CTC's warehouse is and stuff. We left that the same, we didn't change our industrial or add to it. And then this black right here is open space, and basically that's the flood zone with rush creek.
And the Windsor River Trail.
Oh, and the Windsor River Trail is also open space. Anything, anything else on?
Just to review, all the, the green, we, like she said, we've taken out A one, and it's A two, and it's transitional. So it can transition into residential, or it can transition into commercial, whatever it happens to be. But we kinda wanted to leave the door open.
That's yellow. Only this is, this is.
Oh, well, whatever that is.
The yellow is residential, I still wanna get.
Out of the impact area, or out of the city limits in the impact area, we've, we're trying to change all that to A two, so it's transitional, so, so the door is open that it can transition to whatever it turns out being, whether it turns out being a commercial area. And we anticipate, or I anticipate, as we've discussed it, any major industrial that comes in our area would probably be outside of the impact area. And then as we, as the city grows, we would adopt that and adopt that as an, as an industrial area. But for our little city that we have now, it just, industrial just doesn't seem to be anything other than the exception of CTC's property there. So we're trying to, trying to make it so in the future we have more flexibility with things, instead of just being line-itemed into everything. And just so you know, the council, I've come down to city council a lot and spent a lot of time with our staff going through all this and trying to decide what would be most common sense for our community, so you guys didn't have to sit through hours and hours of meetings. So I did it for you. You're welcome. But anyway, I just wanna thank the staff for their willingness to jump in on this and to help and, and have good discussions about the reality of things and what really needs to happen in certain areas and what doesn't. Just trying to make, I mean, we wanna make our city more appealing, more productive, more desirable. And so that's what our goals are.
So we really like the overlay idea and the concept of it, and it does give you a lot more flexibility. Driving in here, I was just looking at some properties like Harris Ranch and a lot, you know, you know, government state agents, actors, and all that, but there's one after another after another that's like right around 3,000 square feet, the lot size. And from our proposal we put together, we were like at 3,300 square feet lot size to be able to do what we were looking at. Is there any way to adjust this high-density square footage down from the 4,356?
Well, that put it where there's three units available, probably on your piece, right?
Yeah.
You're talking the five?
Well, we, we could probably do four instead of five. We were talking about doing five, but it would have to be, it would have to be like a little smaller than that to do five. So to do four, we'd have to go to 3,300. Which, you could live with.
Which, what?
What does that mean?
We're gonna calculate that density and what that goes to.
And maybe why he's doing that, just so that they know too, we're proposing a different overlay area when we met and got looking at things more. We were thinking of expanding the overlay area. So this is the new area.
Which is great, it just adds flexibility. Doesn't mean people have to make any changes.
Well, exactly.
They just have an opportunity to do it if they want to.
But actually, it takes in some commercial. And since it's an overlay, we can combine it just because it's not a rezone.
I guess Darren, I just, I can't, I'm thinking of your property and I'm thinking how you had the three in the front, but I guess I don't understand how the two in the back would go.
If we changed the first behind, we would just put one in the back is what we would do.
So it would be kind of the same type thing? I mean, you'd have the three like this and then one this way?
So that would put the density up to 14 units per acre.
Which would be less than an apartment or condominium probably. Or duplex.
That was at 3,000 or 3,300?
3,300. It's, it comes out to 13.2, which would have to round up to 14 to make it make sense, but.
So that's 3,300?
No, no, that's not right. Hang on. 13, sorry. 14 would make them too small. 13 is 3,350.
So I get, at this point, is it just a case of, do we want to be that dense? I mean, so it's just a choice that we as council, or you as a council, need to make, do we want to increase densities that much? I mean, currently, we're at six?
Six, yeah.
So we're more than doubling the density in that particular overlay. But I guess the goal in that overlay is we want, we want to promote housing.
So what is the density of an apartment?
I have no idea.
Well, they don't fit under the same category because these would be single-family dwellings per acre where an apartment or a duplex or something, you know, they're kind of a different animal.
But that would be an option, right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, yeah, so.
It's a lot to say, you have, you have to build an apartment.
I see what you're saying.
With all these people, but we want to build houses.
Yeah. I get it. I get it. So. Any thoughts? Well, essentially, I mean, have you been, Darren, have you been up through New Meadows lately and seen those new apartments? They look exactly the same as what, kind of what you guys were proposing, but they're all hooked together, which defeats, defeats the purpose that you're, you're after. But I just saw those one day and I thought, oh, they copied your idea, but they hooked them all together. So they could, so they could beat zoning.
We're open to do some alleys, but yeah.
Yeah. But yours would be significantly bigger than those as far as square footage, because those are a small two-bedroom. And you were looking at, square footage wise, what were you guys looking at?
So the, the density actually should be 14.
14, not 13 for his.
Yeah, because 14 will put the minimum lot size at 3,111, which if they need 3,300, then they'd be good. So the minimum lot size would be 3,111 square feet. Of course, you can go bigger, but that'd be the minimum you could do. At 14.
So do we want to change that to between six to 14?
Yeah, it should be 14.
That's what you have to change it to.
Yeah.
I said, go for it because I'm tired of listening about housing and stuff, and someone wants to build some housing, freaking do it. And if there ain't one person in here complaining about it, so might as well go do it.
Yeah.
Then I guess it should be here as much as Darren and Pat's ones are.
I agree.
Okay?
So what's the council proposing, changing it to 3,350 and 14 in that sentence?
No, no, no. It'll be, 3,111 is, is 14 per unit acre.
Is it housing? 3,111 and 14 units per acre.
Yeah.
And that would be classified as our minimum lot size, right?
Well, only for that.
Only in the overlay zone.
Only in the overlay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That works for them.
Can you give me that square, that square feet again?
So the square footage minimum would be 3,100 and, wow, it's 3,111.42. Should we round it up to 3,112?
No, that's a four.
Okay, so 3,111 minimum square footage is 14 units per acre.
And that's lot size. That's not structure size. So along with that, then we have to go through all of our setbacks and adjust all those.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Because I don't volunteer for that.
I'm sure I will have to. Any other thoughts or comments?
Darren, well, they were talking about, no, the snow not shedding off, right? It's built to be.
Keeping on the roof.
Holding it on the roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, and well, in our comp plan, we talked about that. The zero lot line thing.
Zero lot line, yeah.
The good news is our snow load's going down.
Yeah. Zero lot lines is a strategy that increases densities in single-family detached housing development. So basically, it just means they could be constructed really close to the side property lines without it really a yard or anything.
Correct when I broke the shop.
But that's in our comp plan. It's not in our code.
Now, the building inspector had some thoughts on how it could be done, and we were talking about three across. Remember? I don't remember the details.
Steve?
Yeah. I can't remember what he called them, the swales things.
Yeah. I don't remember either.
Build another shop.
So the council wants me to change that part of it. And then we need to work on, that'll eventually change setbacks.
Yeah. Everybody good with that? Del Ray, you good with that?
And how do the council feel about the new proposed overlay area?
Too big, too small?
Perfect.
We actually, it was a lot smaller than that, and we decided, why don't we just make that bigger and make it fit that complete into town?
And the whole thing's a real walkable area because it's all on this side of Rushcrick.
Yeah. And with the properties that are there, it gives a lot of opportunity, a lot of opportunity for a lot of people to do this, to make affordable housing, so. Did you guys see the map? Did you?
Yeah.
Anyway, that's.
So I'm not sure that we want to set a public hearing yet on it. We'll need to get all of this redone and then new definitions from the attorney and things. So hopefully, we can have a review of all of that next month. And then we can set a public hearing for it.
Okay.
We'll, since the council stands as the P and Z commission, we only have to have one public hearing on the comp plan.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Sandberg. Once again, I'd just like to thank the staff of the city. They put a lot of time and effort into those areas that I, we looked at, and, and it's going to be an ongoing thing as we continue on. There'll probably be three sections or three chapters a month that we have to do adjustments to and our master plan and everything. Because they're all tied together and you just can't change one without changing three different things, so.
You have to do the whole thing, making sure it all fits.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Okay, item five. Cambridge Impact Area Agreement with Washington County.
On this one, it's the same agreement that you had last month, except there's a few things that were tweaked a little bit. And then the staff and the mayor met, had a conversation with the attorney this morning on a few other things that happened. So this is the proposed ordinance for Washington County to adopt. This wouldn't be our ordinance. This would be Washington County's ordinance. Proposing, we'd like to see this so that we have, that some of our ordinances are gone by in the impact area and not Washington County's. So on the first page, you'll see in red that the defined area needs a legal description provided by the county in a map. I've talked to Bonnie Brent about this and, because I felt that, you know, this is kind of what the county should, you know, technically could have been coming to us to propose something and done more of the legwork, but we tried to be a little proactive so that they knew what we were kind of looking at before they went into that work, which they've appreciated and stuff. But I was hoping, since they have that information, that they'll come up with a legal description and the map for this agreement. And then it talks about that on C at the bottom of that page, that the City of Cambridge Ordinance's rules and regulations shall not apply to any parcel of land 20 acres or larger used solely for agricultural purposes. And because of the land splits, how Washington County does original parcels, we thought we needed to get rid of at least that part of it. The land split thing's going to kind of cause a little confusion, I think. But the parts that we want to keep in, indeed, we're asking that the county, they amend their comprehensive plan to be in agreement with our comprehensive plan for the impact area. And the attorney was going to put in all of these things that were, that they're also adopted, not just proposed. So this one ordinance, we don't have to do another one to say that they're adopted. And then, so in E, we're proposing the subdivision ordinance be that the area of impact goes by the City of Cambridge's ordinances and not Washington County's. And then F is that we propose the zoning ordinance goes by the City of Cambridge and not Washington County, but not applied to any of the parcels of land 20 acres or larger. So we're basically saying we go by our comp plan, our subdivision ordinance, our zoning ordinance in the impact area. And then in G, the county is responsible for the administration enforcement of the city's ordinances, and they shall receive all the permit fees for inspections and things like that, because the building permits actually have to come from the county and can't come from the city. Then the number two talks about amendments to the comprehensive plan. And six is about how we'll form a planning and zoning commission to represent the area of city impact, and so that there'll be a proportionate share that, of people on that committee that live in the city limits compared to the impact area. But the planning and zoning, we will have both on it. And then a renegotiation clause. And we're also looking at, in our subdivision ordinance that we don't have right now, it kind of implies it in some places, but in our actual zoning ordinance, well, subdivision ordinance, we're gonna, instead of just suggesting a development agreement, we're gonna say a development agreement's required. That's pretty standard anymore. And that way, it's not that you have to do things, but you can negotiate things. So that was proposed by the attorney to do that. And let's see. Cory, can you think of anything else?
The no multifamily dwellings in the impact area.
Oh, yeah, that the attorney's going to include, you know, in changing our ordinance, that no multifamily dwelling units are allowed in the impact area. The biggest reason for that is, you know, they're going to need water and sewer. And so if something, they would, you know, they could, it could always be annexed in and that happen anyway, but just traditionally, you know, just automatically multifamily dwelling wouldn't be used. And one reason for the development agreements too, we were also going to put in about sidewalks. We've kind of felt that in the impact area, not all places need sidewalks. It doesn't really make sense to require someone to put in sidewalks to nowhere. But at some time, if the city did grow, we need to make sure that we have easements for that area. So we would be putting in that. And if we put it into a development agreement, then if we felt that was something that needed sidewalks, if it was a bigger subdivision, you know, if you had a 50-home subdivision that you really needed development to have sidewalks and stuff, you could take care of it that way.
Any questions? It's interesting to me that, that the county's well aware that we have to have this new agreement by December 31st of this year. And Cambridge is the only city, as far as I know, pushing to get it done. All the other cities are just kind of sitting back waiting for the county to do it. So us proposing this to the county, it'll give them a starting point to do the other cities in our county.
Well, Gordon went to, and talked to the city of Weasor and they didn't even know. Start the conversation.
Yeah. So anyway, so. So anyway, so we're leaving the county. Yay, go team. Okay, any questions or comments about any of that stuff or any of the stuff we've talked about tonight? Come on, I know you've got something.
So hopefully, we'll have it reworked for next month's meeting with the additions from the so that you guys can see it again to be able to approve us taking it to the commissioners.
Yeah, we just had him change some stuff this morning, so now we've got to call him back and change some other things. Item six. They moved and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we'll see ya.
Yeah, through the IPD, city permitting. Bo from the city.
Yeah, the other day. Yeah, and heart attack.
You love that information, save it.
Then he had three bouts in the movie on top of lung cancer, which is.
He smoked a pipe.
Oh, yeah.
If you got, if you got lung cancer, that's not the best thing you can do.
Well, even before you have lung cancer.
That's not a thing you should be doing. Unless you have it, man, foolish. They're going to have a uh, next month.
So what would be the best, just your email, because they're going to want an email.
Uh, I'm not sure. Rory's going to be buried. I'm not sure. Because they're all from California, so I don't know if they're, I don't think they have hollered out to California.
I mean, I'll know once I get in there. I just don't know how it looks like because I know that was four years ago when we helped him with the perm. Similar, I guess, completely changed from there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get ahold of him tomorrow and see what we got to do to do that and then send it over to you.
If you can give, if you can give us that as soon as you're ready, because April 3rd is coming up quickly. We won't have enough time for us to do the, whatever we have to do. Whatever they ask us updated and. I asked him twice, so I called him a lot. He must have, we did call a bunch of times and answered, but I found the answer. He said, oh, yeah, it's the E perm. It's just a
Sure. Okay, I'll get that to you. Hopefully, I'll have some, well, hopefully, I won't have more pictures of commercial street stuff.
Let us know when you, when you get that.
Check everything out.
Right now, we can send a letter. If come more, we'll send another letter. All in one.
Sure.
Some build up more like E, we'll send another letter.
Okay.
Anything else you need from us?
Yeah, anyway.
That's all I have.
Cool.
That's what I want to hear on that.